Supervisor Nolan, can you hear us? Okay, thank you. My apologies, everybody. We had some technical difficulties. We were trying something new and didn't quite work out. So to improve the speakers around the room. So for everybody who's online or if you're talking, don't forget to get the mic up there. It's on the wall for the computer for those that are joining us. Where we are in the agenda, thank you for joining us out there. We're at Department Reports, Requests, and I'm Sheriff Winchell. I believe you've got the floor right now, sir.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, we've got a couple of things we need to do today. The Any particular order you want me to go in or just go down through? We need the Marine Patrol Grant. It's something we apply for every year. We just need to get the approval to use it. Apply and use it. Have you got the stats on it? Did everybody get a copy?
Forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's the maximum we would spend, and it's reimbursable, so. And it's one of those, if we don't spend it, we don't get it, so.
Permission to apply. Is there most permission like second by Dana? Any other discussion?
Under Sheriff, can you kind of bring us up to date what this is about, what it's used for, the mechanics of buying a boat, selling a boat, getting a boat?
No, we already have the boat. We've had the boat for, the new boats, I believe, for about five or six years. We try to put boats out on, under this grant, it's something that connects to pretty much any way, the canal or the river. But also, this would cover our new bike patrols, if we're able to get them out on the bike trails that use the canalway bike path. It would be extra patrols on top of what we already have that is reimbursable.
Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, John, you patrol the Hudson River is what you're saying?
We could. We could put our boat in on the Hudson. We do not patrol it regularly. We try to do the the lakes that are more populated.
Okay, and if you were going to do the Hudson River, where would you put the boat? You don't have a boat on, I should be counting on the Hudson River.
That's why we don't do it. Usually if we need support on the Hudson, we call Softwoods Falls.
I just think we need to go back someday and discuss this by having a boat on, because the traffic and usage of the Hudson River is growing exponentially, and I'm sure you're aware of it. And that was my little thought. Um, I've considered that. It is a tax write-off. I consider that for a tax write-off.
Yes, I have a question about the bike patrol. Will they be bicycles? Would they be on something a little bit more efficient like a golf cart or ATV?
No, we have, we have three officers who are trained to ride the bicycles. We actually got a grant, or actually where they were donated by the corporation that does the bike race down in Cambridge every year, or the Baton Hill Bike Race. They actually donated a couple of bikes to us, so, and we've trained three officers to ride them. So far, they've been out at a couple of small community things, but we do hope to use them eventually out on the bike trail.
Is it against the rules to have a golf cart or something, which would be faster, way more efficient than pedals? To me, pedaling kind of seems like you're putting out a public image. It isn't really about it. Force user.
And that's actually what it is. It's more of a public, more of a PR thing than putting people out on on the bike trail just for, it's more of a PR and public safety, but I don't believe you can have a motorized vehicle of any sort, including a golf cart on the bike trail.
Thank you.
All in favor? Yes, sir. I think that John's actually looking for a budget amendment in finance. I don't think he's looking for.
I didn't hear what he said.
Yeah, you're looking for a budget amendment in finance, right? This grant's already something that you have.
Yes, but yes.
This is a budget amendment to finance. Okay. Motion reflects that. Mended by Dana Hogue, I'm sorry, second. By Sue, John, thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you for clarifying. All those in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carried.
I mean, were there was questions for me or?
No, go ahead, sir. The force to yours.
The resolution to transfer funds to purchase some chairs for our, some for our office staff and some for our investigators.
My Dana Hogue in second. Anyone want to second that motion? Dana Hough, thank you, sir. Discussion. Mr. Half, go ahead.
There's no dollar amount here.
All right, so there's actually two transfers. One, we have money in partial in the budget. We would need to transfer about twenty-six hundred dollars, I believe, for one purchase. And the other one would be a per.
Any further discussion? I'm going to be your bad penny today. Oh, go ahead. But unless these chairs are over five hundred dollars apiece, this doesn't mean you go.
The one set of chairs are over five hundred dollars apiece because we have to go with the wider chairs for the investigators because because of the guns that they wear on their hips. It just saves on the wear and tear on the chairs when we get the wider chairs.
Each chair is over five hundred?
Yes.
Okay. Good, good questions. Who are going to put your options on the diet?
It's the belt, yeah.
Yeah. Any other further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carried. Anything else?
The last, the last thing, it came up, it's something that happens every year. We're looking for a proclamation in recognition of Sheriff's Week, which is upcoming, the week of September eighteenth through the twenty-fourth. And I can, I'll have a sample proclamation sent over if it hasn't already been.
Thank you. Do we, I don't know if we can move again? Yes, let me, thank you for that.
Transfer funds and purchase.
Yeah, I think that was the.
Yeah, that's why we needed to come to you guys, because of from a point four to a point two that we want to transfer the money.
Is it two, John, or one? Is one for twenty-six hundred and one for three thousand? Are they two separate budget amendments?
They're two separate. Well, the one set is for a set of chairs for the investigators, which are the more expensive one, and the other one is for chairs for the office staff. They're less expensive, but we still needed to put money into that account to do it.
Me again.
So the second set for the office staff, are they over five hundred as well?
Let me look here. Seven eighty. No, the office staff's chairs are looks like they are four sixty apiece.
Okay, so when you see the resolution of finance, it'll be a different account. Four hundred and sixty dollars each. Under Sheriff, that's four hundred and sixty-something dollars each inexpensive chair.
I'm trying to find that.
WTH, question mark? I mean, come on, that's a little bit absurd, especially if these are public funds buying cheap chairs for almost five hundred dollars each.
Well, they get, they get a lot of use, and this is the first time we replaced the chairs since I've been here. A lot of these chairs.
Chairs. I'm gonna have to go, no, I'm sorry, that's a little bit rich with my blood. And if we go back to the three thousand dollar, the two thousand six hundred one before that, the more expensive chairs, my God, how much are those?
Those chairs are seven sixty apiece.
I think we have a fiscal restraint. There won't be a formal resolution on the smaller chairs. Less expensive.
In defense of John, it may be out of our ignorance. Do you know what kind of chairs are they? A swivel chair? Are they a straightback chair? Do they have a lumbar support? And what's the average price of a desk chair that we're buying for the rest of the county? Are they all averaging five hundred? I mean, he might not be out in line, but if we're only allowing other departments to buy office chairs that are a hundred and fifty dollars, then yes, I agree with Dana. But if we're allowing this everywhere to the county, we don't want to sing the loud guy. My point.
Few years back, I went out to Staples and went through all the chairs in the place, and the price only determines what you pay. There's no question about it. My problem was, you can buy a chair that'll cripple you. And honestly, God, that's true. And I didn't pick out the most expensive chair, and I sure as hell picked the least expensive chair, but there's ones that will look healthy for you to sit in. And if you get the right chair, your workers' count is going to pay the price. I'm just saying, get the right chair at the right price.
Yes, sir. These are Pilot XL twenty-four seven task chair.
How's your back?
Great. And it wasn't before that.
My apologies, Sheriff. Mr. Hogue is cut the floor right now.
I'm sorry.
Two fifty, he said he got a good chair.
Yes, Sheriff, go ahead.
Yeah, so these are, the product is from CoreCraft, which is a state agency through, and it's listed as the Pilot XL twenty-four seven task chair. Heavy-duty universal casters, adjustable T-arms. That's the seven hundred and sixty-dollar chair.
This is like a zero-turn chair, Dana.
So Ian Vescur, about to get out.
Just to answer Supervisor Shaw, your question, we don't have, at one point, we were trying to standardize the office chair to less expensive. The one thing that I will say that I've noticed over the years that a lot of those hundred and fifty-dollar chairs don't seem to last long and need to be replaced sooner than later. I just pulled up this Pilot XL chair that the other sheriff mentioned, and it is, you know, it's sturdy, comfortable, fits many different sizes, and it has a lumbar support and the things you really probably would want in a chair for somebody that's sitting in it eight to ten hours a day. So that could be why it is off-state contract. So the going price, it does say here like seven hundred dollars, so. It probably isn't.
Sir, we can ask to convert motion with more than five-dollar chair. The second one, we need a motion to come here. This other officer could do a.
Okay, move on. I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with chairs.
This chair I'm sitting in is worthless.
All right. Thank you, Sheriff, for helping us all come to an understanding and educate ourselves on chairs.
I misspoke one of the resolution. The chairs are all in one resolution. The other resolution is actually for equipment for the cars for the computer systems. And we just, we we actually outfitted a couple more cars with computers, so we needed to get new mounts. So that's what the budget transfer, the second budget transfer from three one one zero, yeah, for three thousand. From the point, it's a point four to a point two. Those are four mounting systems with keyboards.
I'll move it.
Wait a second. A discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Close. Carried. Thank you. Anything else, Sheriff?
That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
Public safety. Perfect timing.
Hey, good morning.
Morning.
All right, we've got a bunch of grant stuff that we need to present first this morning. So our Public Safety Answering Point Grant, which is an annual grant that we receive, we just received the award on that, a hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. The performance period's one year on that. That's a hundred percent reimbursement grant. If you want me to run through all three of these at once, and then we do the acknowledgements, all we need is the board to put those forth, so Al can allocate those appropriately in the budget.
Let's do them individually, please.
Sure. Okay. So that's the first one.
To apply for the grant, correct? Is that what you were asking for?
Nope, that's one we've already received the award on. The application was back in February, so we just got the award announcement on it, and the performance period started in January, so you can see the state is well behind. So we're already halfway or well over halfway through that. So that goes directly back into our personnel. That's something that we've done for a bunch of years now that we put that money right back into our point ones.
Understand. Recognize the grant. It's received. Motion. A second. Sue. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Close. Next, sir.
All right, statewide interoperable communications grant. This is the one you've heard referred to as the SICG formula. Usually this comes every year due to COVID. The state's behind, so they're giving us two years together, so two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two. So the award amount is one million, four hundred sixty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars. The performance period on this has been extended out to thirty-six months, since it's a combined grant, and that's a hundred percent reimbursement. This is the continuation of the grant series that's allowed us to not only fund upgrades in the reporting equipment in the nine-one center, to fund upgrades in the radio communication system as a whole throughout the county. So this will allow us to continue that important work that we've been able to do without spending our local tax dollars on this.
Pushing to acknowledge. Dana. All, any more discussion?
Just another point of clarity. This is also a budget amendment to the capital project. He's under the Capitol Project.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you're looking for me to say anything, I'll make sure that we have the resolution data forms in time for finance to you, and obviously, you know, you allocate those as you need to.
Thank you.
So our standard process for grants, we recognize the whole grant when it's awarded, and then in February or March of next year, you'll see a bunch of resolutions where departments are rolling forward their unspent balances. That's how we handle grants.
Thanks.
Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carried. Excellent.
All right, so the last one is a new grant. It is part of the Homeland Security Grant Series, the Domestic Terrorism Prevention Grant, which was just announced. So the award amount on this is a hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars. The performance period's going to be twenty-four months. It's going to begin September first of this year and end August thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. This will be a one hundred percent reimbursement grant. This one, we do need to acknowledge the award and have permission to apply for, since the award came out on the same day the application came out.
Motion. Dana, second. Sue, John. Discussion.
Tim, do you want a budget now, or do you want to wait so you have document in hand?
Yeah, we're going to wait. We'll have that for you in time for finance. After we have the next discussion, we'll just have to have some discussions with Under Sheriff Winchell on how we're going to lay out that plan to the state so we can get it approved before we can allocate the budget.
If you want it in this finance, though, this committee will want to send it there.
Do you need the breakdown right now, or do you just, can we move, we can just move it to finance and we'll have the breakdown by then?
Yes, sir. John, frozen finance. We have an amendment, correct? Second by Dana Hough. Any further discussion? Thank you all for that. All those in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carried. There's three grants.
All right, grant project overview on that new grant that we just discussed, Domestic Terrorism Prevention Grant. So Governor Hochul issued Executive Order eighteen back in May. Within the executive order was the requirement for each county in the city of New York to develop and maintain their own domestic terrorism prevention plan. Additionally, counties were advised that funding would follow to support the plan and operations relative to the plan. So therefore, the state has created this DTPG that is being overseen by Homeland that is being overseen by Homeland Security. So just a couple of deadlines for everyone to be aware of as we move forward to that. The application has to be into the state by September 16th, which we're already in process of working on with Sheriff Murphy and UnderSheriff Winchell. The Domestic Terrorism Prevention Plan for the county has to be submitted to the state by December 31st of 2022. That's all requirements of this funding. And this project will ultimately involve a number of personnel from other various county operations in a number of facets, mental health, medical partners, social services, community organization partners, and working hand-in-hand with Sheriff Murphy and the undersheriff and their team, as well as we're looking to partner with Warren County on this project as a joint effort in as many areas of the project as possible, knowing that a lot of the players are on both teams. So it's gonna be very important that we're working together. We have already started discussions with Warren County staff that are working on this project on their end. So we are looking forward that this is gonna be a good joint effort to continue a lot of things that we do together already. And we'll continue to make sure that the committee is updated on this as we continue to move forward. Obviously, this came very fast. And we are trying to get the application in and just work together to make sure that that gets done. Any questions on that?
No questions, sir. Continue.
All right. So just an update on our communication staffing. So as we have over the last two years, our communication center continues to run at minimum staffing with a continued acknowledgement and thanks to our team of communications professionals who have been dedicating, continue to be, to serving our communities, our first responders, and maintaining coverage for each other to make sure everybody gets their time off. Just to give you an update on where we are now, we have one full-time communications officer who just started their training period, which we expect to be about four months on the average, if they're successful. The candidate's a great candidate. We're very hopeful. And we're in the process of hiring a per diem communications trainee, who will start in the next couple of weeks. Same timeframe there, obviously, with a per diem, it's a little more difficult to work in scheduling to make sure we get that time in. And we have an expected retirement of one of our full-time communications officers at the end of 2022. Sadly, we are down to only one current working per diem communications officer from five to eight where we were over the last five years. So our staff has really picked up the ball and let us continue to run at minimum staffing or below, covering each other for at least the last two years. And while we continue to drive to recruit, you know, our big concern is to retain the trained people that we have, and we're blessed to have them. They've got us through this and for the foreseeable future, we're gonna be dealing with this. Peace apps across New York State and the nation as a whole continue to struggle with staffing in peace apps and other areas, as well as you've seen in law enforcement and other parts of our operations. And the 911 Coordinators Association is meeting with reps from state civil service at our fall conference to discuss some other recruitment issues relative to the testing aspect of these critical positions as well. So we just wanted to express our continued thanks to all the members of our staff for their work, their professionalism and dedication, and the continued support that we have from the Personnel Office, the County Administrator, and certainly the Board of Supervisors. So we are hopeful that we're able to keep these trainees, get them successfully through training, and continue our recruitment bit after that to keep putting some more back into the system. Sad to lose an employee who has really stepped up and done a lot of work for us over the last 20 or so years and has spent a lot of time covering for their partners. So that is gonna be a big hole for us to fill. All right, the last thing that I have, or the second to last thing, the Fire Investigator Trainee Proposal. So we're not doing anything other than the fire coordinator just wants to advise the committee. You'll see this through the budget process as we normally do, but there's been no discussion about it here in public safety. We've met with Danielle a number of times and talked to her about this and are working through with her. But as we continue to see increases in requests for fire support investigations and approaching some potential retirement of our current fire investigators, the fire coordinators identified a need to begin recruitment and training for new fire investigations personnel to aid and support the team for the future, as well as the need from the fire departments in the county. So working in conjunction with the Personnel Officer and our partners at State Fire, the fire coordinator is going to be requesting two fire investigator trainee positions to be established in the 2023 budget, which will allow for ample time to allow the selected candidates to complete the required training, which is 15 days of training, which breaks down to over 108 hours. Obviously, that's over a year period. The courses are broken down into two or three-day courses here, a four-day course there, as well as there was required field work they have to complete alongside current active members of the investigation team during that process. So the process has changed over the years to become a certified fire investigator through the state. So we're looking to start that in 2023, which will include creating those two trainee positions. The salary will be reflective to them not being a full fire investigator. And obviously, the requirement will be within one year to maintain certification, get all the courses necessary, and do their field work. So we're just kinda passing that out as an FYI to the committee ahead of budget time.
Thank you for that, Tim. Any questions with Tim on that topic? What else you got, Tim?
Anything you wanna add on that, Fire Coordinator? He is on, in case there was anything, any questions for that?
Just that the, the state, by state law, the fire chief is responsible for to determine the cause of any fires in his district. The problem is, the state will not, does not do any outreach training. So the fire chiefs cannot get the training they need to determine the cause. So that's why we're, one of the reasons we're asking for the people.
All right, last thing that I have, if there's no questions on that. All right, last thing that I have is, we're happy to announce the scheduling of the first EMS or future of EMS in Washington County Work Group Meeting, which is gonna be September 19th at 7:00 PM. The members of the board that were selected or offered up received an email with the connection information, the location information of that meeting. I'm also happy to report that Dr. Williams, who is the Medical Director for a number of the MS agencies who works out of Glens Falls Hospital, has agreed to participate and be a key part of that, as well as the new Regional Director of the Regional Planning Organization that is taking over for Mountain Lakes is gonna be part of that, as well as the MS agencies, the supervisors, the County Administrator, the Treasurer, the County Attorney. So I think putting all of those together are gonna give us a really good team to come back with some good ideas and identify areas of concern, problems, areas where we can improve, or things that we're doing absolutely wonderful. So we are happy to see that kick off, too.
Thank you, Tim. Mr. O'Neal.
Who's on that worker?
Give me one second. All right, supervisors or the entire group?
All right, groups, time for it.
Okay. Supervisor Hanky, Supervisor O'Brien, Supervisor Clary, Supervisor Rozelle. EMS Agency Representatives will be Stephanie Barker from Argyle EMS, Mark Spezio from Cambridge EMS, Frank Brownell from Easton Greenwich EMS, Thomas Noble from Fort Anne EMS, John Smith from Ford Edward EMS. Granville EMS is still designating a representative, Vicki Campbell from Salem EMS, Daniel Pitts from Skeensboro EMS, Renee Kennedy from Ticonderoga EMS, Shane Irwin from Bay Ridge and North Queensberry EMS. They're recently going through a merger. The County MS Coordinator, Bruce Mason, the Deputy MS Coordinator, Paul Zinn, Glenn Gosnell, myself, Melissa Fitch, County Administrator, Roger Wicks, County Attorney, Al Nollet, County Treasurer, Darryl Wilson, Chairman of the Public Safety Committee as an ancillary support, Ann Smith, who is the new Director of the Ford Drum Regional Planning Organization, who took over for Mountain Lakes, and Dr. Tom Williams from Glens Falls Hospital.
And would you do me a favor and that list of names, organizations, could you email that out? Tell the supervisors again, just so they have that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, along the same lines, the issue I have, and I know what has to occur, has to occur. But to come up, you're gonna come up with a recommendation you're gonna bring back to the board, right? What is, or should I reword it? What's the purpose of this? What's the, what's your goal? What's the?
You ready for me to answer that?
Well, somebody, maybe you're not the person I should be asking. If it was an appointed committee, what's the goal or the objective?
As Tim knows, I can certainly answer that question. I've answered it, answered it, answered it for how many years I've been a coordinator. There's nobody in this anymore than, you know.
Oh, I understand that part of it, but is it gonna be a report? Is it gonna be a report that comes back when you've done an outline of something?
Well, this is, this is right now just a study, okay? I mean, a lot of the other counties have done this. We're hoping for positive results. I can only say it's gonna come from the individual person again, okay? That's what EMS is, just aspire to this. I mean, Tim does a lot of this legwork, and I certainly appreciate his help. But the bottom line is, we're gonna study everything, okay? EMS is not any central service in the state of New York, okay? It is not recognized as such, okay? Until everybody recognizes this, you're not gonna see much funding, if any, come out of Albany for any of this. So right now, these agencies are struggling, okay? Struggling to pay their members, so. I said right along, I think the towns are gonna have to step up and do something about this. But I brought this up many years ago. And anyway, what is it? I'm not answering or answering, or I know Dana's gotta stand.
Yeah, Mr. O'Neal, go ahead.
So if you're saying state funding is gonna be required to make any significant change, right? Bruce?
I'm saying the funding's gonna have to come from somewhere. Whether it's from, whether it's from Washington County, you know, and again, I realize, we hear in Washington County, I'm Washington County, not paying for this. It's either that, or perhaps you're gonna have to resolution and you're gonna have to put a tax, just like a fire tax in your own little communities. And I know nobody wants to do this. But you've got a handful of people, guys, especially up your way, and you know, it's like a tie coming down, you know, it's, we're all working together here, but the runs are being handled somehow, but I still have a couple squads that are bad actors. When I take another squad to put it in that district and then they get their own call for the second call, that's another domino effect, so. Yes, Dan?
Yeah, and no way am I challenging what you're doing and saying is not right. I apologize if I came off that way. I wanted to know what the end results was. Was it gonna be, this group is gonna educate themselves and report back to the towns at the respective squads, right? Or is there gonna be a report, which it sounds good if you have a written report, that's gonna be presented to everybody? Because you, as a group, are gonna educate yourselves when you find out all the issues. And will that report be given to everybody to share? That's all.
Yeah, I certainly believe that this report will be given back to the Public Safety Committee as a starter.
So there will be a report in the comeback? That's really what I was looking.
Knowing Tim Hardy, like I've known you forever, there will be a report, and it will be given by Tim or Glenn, who have always been there for me. So they're actually, Timmy's good enough to let me stand here and speak today, so. Dave, you had your. Remind you. Whatever, Dana, go ahead.
Dan's point about working groups, so not every working group, I think. Mission statement is to produce a report, and that's final. I think this is, EMS is gonna be constantly evolving. You're gonna be constantly taking the temperature. One of the patients is a little bit sick, and then you would report back to us so that we are appraised all along, not waiting for some report at the end of a few months, and then as soon as that report is published, it's obsolete. So I gotta, am I wrong that this is kinda like an early warning system, this is designed to?
I believe I gave you the early warning system several years ago. That's what's gonna happen. So it is happening. It's a dire warning, guys. I, we're all getting older, okay? People don't stay in this as a career once you get past a certain age, okay? We're having to pay people a lot more, these ALS providers. They're all from the same tool on that table. They're all drawing. They're all working for different agencies, but they're all, it's just crazy. It's crazy. And again, there's not a lot of people going into this, just follows volunteerism. There isn't anybody hardly going into this. They're going in for a paycheck, guys, so.
Mr. O'Brien?
I think you identified EMS, but also mentioned that fire. There are fewer and fewer volunteers. There are pain people who are skipping from one place to another place for me, should EMS. I've heard stories when I was taking a ride in the ambulance, you spend four months and left for another job, just turn over. So I think the real issue is, we have to identify the issues, identify potential solutions, and work with a group of professionals to figure out presentations and thought processes, and at least understand where we can go to make things work together and be more successful. And, you know, I had a conversation with my fire department, and they said they're coming to a point where they recognize they can't be standalone either. They just can't afford it based on manpower. So that's all coming, you get volunteers now. It's not just EMS.
So I mean, there will be a report, but this is all, this is all finally coming to a head. What I've been preaching, Tim has been preaching, and knowing Tim, as I told you like five minutes ago, we will get you something. I don't know if anything's gonna come out of this. Dr. Williams is a great guy, but he's wishy-washy also. He's right out of Albany Med. He's trained at Albany Med. He's one of the R.G.A.s that are from Albany Med. He is our medical director for several of the splash, not all of them. So, but he probably will have some input, but he's not a great spokesman, I believe, so. Tom Williams is who he is, but I believe it's good to have some medical pressure on this. But he is certainly not the old work director of Arthur County, so. But anyway, Tim, I've said enough, so what are you gonna get to this? Hello?
Yeah, I don't have anything else to add unless there's a question that you need me to follow up on.
So for the committee, my understanding is the work group will need, it's more than one meeting. There's no way to accomplish what they're attempting to accomplish in one meeting. And we'll get periodic updates eventually. The way I see the way ahead is, updates to us, potential recommendations from the working group as to what is necessary or what they believe is necessary to sustain EMS services for our communities. What that looks like, I have no idea. But I can assure you, it's not gonna come free. So there might be some things that we can do. Like pull the state in, but I don't know if we're gonna sway to the state to take any action. Because until they mandate as a central government service, it's up to us.
You see, adding to that, as I said, New York City sits in their own realm, as I've told you for years, okay? The five boroughs are their own. Fidney runs the EMS department down, city of New York, okay? Yes, there are private companies that work for the hospitals, et cetera. Fidney is by itself, okay? Fidney is New York, okay? EMS is supported through Fidney down there, okay? This is not New York City. This is truly upstate New York. We are not supported, okay? The people who work for Fidney are EMS. They're all EMS, is what I'm saying. You have to be EMS to join, you have to lead, so. Go ahead, Tim.
Just a question. What did Essex County face this crisis?
Yeah, but they got a huge grant.
And they got a huge grant.
Right.
So part of what we could be looking at is preparing a plan to go out and get grants.
Well, if they're there, and you and I both know, yes. Essex County was, but years ago, calls in, did a lot of legwork, Dave, and interviewed a lot of these counties. And I think I told you, one of them was my own county from Green when I was living there or growing up, you know. On the paramedic program, the paramedic fly cars and all this stuff. It's a county-run system, I think. But it doesn't come free, okay? And that's the whole game plan here. It's gonna be money. It's gonna be money. So it was Green, and I can't remember. There were a couple other counties, but they were attacked 20 years ago. Way more than this Board of Supervisors.
Any other questions? That's a good question.
I think we're premature, though. We don't have any results. We don't know what the real issue was until those guys being figured all out.
Who you gotta invite, Dana? I mean, we have representatives who. Who you gotta invite, Dana, I mean, we have representatives who, um, investigate squads and things, they, they're part of the REMAC, REMAC, the RemSCO, meet the council, but they're, they're, they're from the Department of Health, Bureau of EMS, okay? But they.
Why don't we elect our, our elected representatives for one? You just got done saying, the state changes its exit nation of personal medical service, it's a, what do you call it?
Essential service.
Essential service. Nothing's gonna change.
No, I mean.
So why would we, because the state's gonna change it to a central service?
Betty Little wrote this up when Warren County was looking at this several years ago. You know, and that came out of Betty's mouth, not mine, trash, you know? Police, fire, and trash, that's the only central service in the state.
Yep, I got that, how do you change that?
I believe it has to come out of the state legislature.
Okay, so.
So. And, and that's what I, that's what, and you, I, I think I've told you that, that's what I'm preaching, I believe it has to be from the, the counties have to go this themselves, because the board of supervisors have to address this to their legislature, Stack, or whoever else, you know, Kerry Warner, you know, the, the month board here, you know?
So we, as a county, have to identify numerous issues, what problems people are facing, get that covered, and not just let every single rescue squad, EMS squad go on that arm. Truly have a central location to identify the issues, put together a plan, so we're able to go to them and talk and tell them.
Yeah, and I think probably that's what Tim is hoping this will somehow work out. This is all new, and Tim, you wanted to say this.
Yeah, certainly, that's the goal of this project and has been from day one with the survey, was to identify issues, identify that each squad is individual, they all have their own either strengths, weaknesses, they're all a little bit different, yet they all play into this big puzzle that is Washington County EMS and how we provide our residents with that essential service in our terms. Uh, regardless of the state, we can continue to advocate for the state, right now there is no money. Uh, that money was a one-time shot for Essex County and there isn't anything that has come yet, so other counties have been forced to take the lead and start doing what we're hoping to do and get everyone together on the same page, so regardless of whether or not the state is gonna do something, yes, we can continue to push forward and beg for them to do something, but at least we're, we're mobilizing ourselves here locally with our own agencies, with our local elected leaders, and continuing to make sure everybody knows and understands what our strengths are, what our weaknesses are, how each squad needs something differently, and how we can best support them to make sure that our residents are getting the best service they can, uh, for the future. But certainly we'll bring everything back, I mean, I, I see this as being multiple meetings over time, and the issues may start out as this and may evolve into that depending on squad activity, I mean, if you go back to the survey, the survey will give you the good early indication of what each squad is facing. Bringing those representatives to the table will be absolutely critical, we're lucky to have them and have them willing to come and give up some of their time, uh, to talk with the members of the board and the other participants there, so we can understand what they're all up against and they can understand the questions that you all are gonna have for them as we look to do this together for the future.
Okay, and other questions for Tim on this topic? Mr. Shaw?
After listening to what everybody said, I think it's a great idea what you're doing, and I don't know who's in charge, but it's gonna be quite a feat to pull this number of people together, to even pick a date for the first meeting. And maybe that's gonna fall on you, Tim, or whoever. Well, I suggest, when you do pick a date, that you notify all the elected state representatives, invite them to send someone there to set in on the groundbreaking information coming in and understand the serious business situation. You know, might be better than just handing them a report at the end.
Yeah, that, that's a good idea. Tim, have you, uh, got Senator Stack and Representative Warner and, or, uh, Matt Simpson? Their offices in the U-boom, this meeting?
Will do.
I think that's good too.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, anybody that touches Washington County as a representative or a senator, that would be, I think.
Understood.
They don't have to, right? At least Dan's point, make them aware that we're, we're having these conversations and invite them if they want to listen in.
I have another name too.
What's that?
Lisa Steph, so Lisa Steph.
Yeah, Congresswoman Stefanics office as well.
Understood.
And we'll put the spotlight on it, see what we get. So it sounds like we're up for a reoccurring topic, the public safety, as an update on EMS, uh, as we go. Does that sound like we're up here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So make sure the EMS gets a reoccurring update. Any other questions for Tim? Yes, Mr. Shaw?
Um, I'm bringing this up, I'm not on public safety, but the last two meetings, uh, Dana has, has commented at the end that he did not see a need for Tim's COVID report, and I've not weighed in on it, because I didn't feel it was the right place, I think this is the right place to discuss that. And I tend to agree with Dana that that report isn't necessary to be read off at a board meeting. Is, uh, any kind of report sufficient is to be handed out? Uh, I think we're tying Tim up, maybe unnecessarily, I know COVID, uh, or CDC has changed their recommendations on COVID reporting. And, and I wanted to get this discussed here, I mean, rather than in the board meeting. And then if Dana wants to take it from there, he has real strong feelings about it.
I, I agree with you, this is the appropriate forum, uh. Chairman Hall?
Yeah, I, there, I was just gonna recommend that, as I said at the original board meeting, we could do it at public safety, but it would be more advantageous because it, it, it affects public health and it would be done in human services meeting, because then we'd have the public health people there to discuss it. And they go through from there, and, because that's what kinda drives this thing, it's public, it's public health.
Well, then, let public health give the report, and not, we're in public safety and you got Tim who gives the report? This is where reports get. I don't, Sam, but I understand your point you're making, and I'm just saying.
I don't, I, I think we're remiss if we don't have our medical professionals give us the advice and the reason that they would do it, or want to see it continue.
So Tim is doing it because public health says to do it?
No, he does it in conjunction with them, all of our departments work together, as you're well aware. And so that's the part that he reports on and keeps track of it, he's been doing the monitoring on that aspect of it. But I think that you will have a different, uh, uh, take that you're gonna get from public health, because they're the ones that deal with it every day as well on the public health aspect of it, about the actual cases that they're, that are coming in, uh, the, the, the volume that may or may not be reported, the most current information that comes in from the Department of State, the public health, uh, the CDC for whatever value that might be, but they still have all of those things to work with under. So before we just mail a, 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 a team, I think we ought to hear from both sides of it, that's all I'm saying, Dan. And human services.
Dana, you don't wanna, your report, do you wanna hear it at all? Do you wanna hear the human services, do you wanna hear the public safety, do you wanna hear it at all? Or do you wanna email that and just let it go?
I don't think you can turn on the news or open a newspaper without getting a report about what's going on, so I think, I recognize COVID is a disease, it's still here, but I don't really think that we should be as ramped up with the report from Tim like we were two years ago. I think as the CDC evolves, we also need to.
Right, you, you said what you don't want, what do you want? Do you wanna just email it out to us, or do you wanna report and commit?
I think the public, um, the health community is where it needs to be, this is safety like fire and EMS.
So if we get a COVID update in health, human services, once a month, we're good?
I think, yeah.
You good with that, Dan?
I think, Tim.
Anybody else got a problem?
Gonna have to take up time and.
Good, let's move on.
What I want is it not to be drawn to the board meeting, I wanted to bait it out. I'm not bringing it up again, I brought it up, I brought it up.
Yeah.
I'd say all time, I have a report.
Yeah. All right, so, Sue, you wanna continue the conversation? And talk health, health services?
Absolutely, and that will be tomorrow, Tim, are you okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely, and just a point to know, the only reason that we give the report uh, is Roger and I were designated by public health, uh, to participate as the PIOs originally, Roger does the majority of it. I was doing all the statistical reporting, the website, those kinda things. Um, so that would be the reason why we're here, certainly hearing from public health. That's where the majority of that information originates, yes, we participate in the briefings with them and those kinda things. But absolutely, whatever the board wants to do, uh, we'll make sure it's getting done.
Tim, at one point, they used, uh, the data for healthcare services to make sure our healthcare systems weren't overly overwhelmed, and they used that to support and find back in other locations, back when it was a pandemic. Is the, as the percentages are going up, uh, people's symptoms are less due to vaccinations and boosters. Um, are they still asking for the percentage rate and the data, healthcare systems?
Yeah, they're still keeping an eye on everything, I mean, obviously they're preparing for another surge this fall, so certainly all of the structure they put in place based on numbers and percentages before is still there. Obviously, we know a lot of times they sent benchmarks and never used them, uh, because then either we didn't know what to do with them or, or whatever, or they changed, I mean, that's basically what we saw a lot originally back to the beginning, when they sent some of those benchmarks for communities relatives to schools being open and closed, and then the number kept changing. Uh, they left everything in place and certainly they're still monitoring everything, but as you saw with the latest changes coming out on the state adopting the CDC guided, uh, guidance for schools and the removal of quarantine and just go into isolation now, and those kinda things, everything is finally aligning uh, from the state level to the federal level to make it a little bit easier to manage, so I think over time, we're gonna see that drop off. But still, the majority of counties are at least reporting out publicly to their, uh, communities on the website, those kinda things, so however you guys wanna move forward, we can certainly make adjustments as necessary.
Yeah, I think that's what, that's what, Mr., not speaking for him, but Dr. App, is asking, sorry, are we gonna sustain it? And where does it sustain, right? Does it sustain with Tim, who's got lots of other things to do? Or are we in a transition to a different way of, of keeping track of it and reporting it? Not a different way, but, you know, giving the lead back to health and human services, thinking. To do that, so.
So we do have discussion tomorrow?
Do have discussion tomorrow, maybe that's, yeah. I mean, from a business perspective, in terms of, is that a government ops thing? I mean, where do we resolve the, the, the who does the report and how we're moving forward in a sustained sort of way, right? We know we gotta keep track of the data still, we gotta report it.
Gotta be public health, it's the health thing, right?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Something about a change of orders, I think Tim's doing a good job of reporting, should tell them where to report it.
Fair with me, fair with me. I didn't bring it up, Dana did. We wanna keep it in committee, right?
I have a discussion tomorrow, we're not, discussion today, we're public health, and we have the same discussion here.
Okay. Fair enough, I'm okay with that, moving on. Any else, Tim? You're, you were an easy.
What's that? Yeah.
Just equipment, um, was there a group, sorry, I'm looking at the, uh, cat. I know what's up with.
Yes, we just walked, just popped on.
Okay.
And the answer is yes. Tim's back. Tim, please call us. Nine, the software for the nine-one-one.
Yes. So actually, what we're gonna do is we're, are, we just talked about this yesterday. So we're getting the group back together, now the fair's over, now that we have people back from vacation that were not able to participate, or we're covering so many hours that they weren't able to participate. We're getting the group together and we're asking them to identify different packages that they've seen out there that we wanna take a look at, so that collective group that we met with originally, uh, Terry, any of you who are participating in that, our staff, the sheriff and his staff, are gonna look at those packages and identify whether or not there's a solution out there that we can all move forward together, like we are now, or there's a need to separate that, before we get too deep into the project and lock ourselves into what we're doing, we need to obviously know if that's something that we can do, uh, or continue to do together with the same solution, or different solutions are gonna be required, which will certainly drive the entire thing. So within the next two weeks, uh, we'll be asking for those from our staff and other members of the team, so we can bring them in and do demos like we talked about, to start looking at different software packages and see what's out there. Uh, because without knowing what's out there, it's very difficult to write an RFP. I mean, there's a lot of different things, especially if what we're RFPing, there's no solution to come back that will work for everybody, we may need to change gears on the project, so that's something internally, myself, the sheriff, Terry, uh, we've all talked about and follow up to our original meeting, so it is still moving forward, however be it slowly.
Thanks for your update, Tim.
Yes, sir.
Mr. App?
A my request from the administrator, Alyssa, could we have a, maybe a one sheet front and back? Of all the working groups that exist, who's on them? Because I've never heard of more working groups in the last twelve years here. Seems like we have a lot of them, but I would like to know which ones we have, who's on them? So that at each meeting, we don't have to ask, because I don't know half of who's on what.
I can give that for you, send it off.
So you really slate it? I'm, I'm actually trying to do it something I want, not really.
Oh, ooh, that's what I mean.
It's out in the height, you know, garden, be hydrated. Um, any other questions for Tim? Thanks, Tim, really appreciate that.
Thank you.
We went on to code enforcement, John. For insurance, you can come up here if you want, yeah, I'm everybody on the line, there you are. Welcome to the hot seat.
It's a cheap chair, John, sorry.
That's right, watch out, that's, it's gonna be funny if I say that. All right, uh, speaking of work groups, we had a work group about the Amish. Anybody not have, but I can get it out at that. Who was, who wasn't?
We gotta make, thank God it's all possible, is that?
Oh, this is, or I defied this.
I'm not as one yet, I'll break down. You have too many of it. Mr. Shaw? I'll, I'll give a wire half. Anyone else? Yeah, supervisors. Okay. I don't know, we can take a lunch break, come back.
I mean, reset a lunch.
I can, I'll get it. All right, John, still yours, I intend that you have, uh, an update, that's it.
This is, this is, yeah.
Okay. Uh, the goal is discussion, I don't think there's any call to needed action. All right. Okay, um. The Amish, um, just gonna use that term widely, um. They have supposed religious beliefs that, uh, they feel they shouldn't have to meet certain aspects of the building codes, a lot of aspects of the building codes. Um, there have been cases in other towns, uh, in New York State, where it's, where it's forced not. It's what they're supposed to do for anybody else, and it went for it. And we made it all the way up to the US District of Work, District of War, and they settled out. Working for that, there's a copy of the agreement here. Just trying to figure out if we're supposed to do something different, and if so, what are we supposed to be doing? I don't feel I have the authority to make any changes with the state. There is, well, let me, let me get back to that settlement agreement, there are all kinds of things that I have issues with in that settlement. So I am not by any means saying that if we're going to make any changes, that follow that agreement, because there are all kinds of things that are not, I don't feel comfortable doing, if I go into it, I don't wanna go down that road. Um, another example, reached out to folks down in Pennsylvania to see how they handle it. Uh, reached out to the states, New York State, to see what they say on it, they say there's, there's no exceptions for them. Um, which would mean that we would send it to court also, it's like, uh, more extended. Uh, but in Pennsylvania, they have a religious exception affidavit, which is in the folder. I came up with one. Just for discussion, see if you guys, you know, like to build that room. That's also in there. Basically coming to you guys saying you don't want us to be doing exactly what the state says, which would be important.
Mr. H. There's too much in this folder to digest right now. I mean, to make an intelligent comment, but the very first sheet I pulled out. Which is Washington, Washington County Department of Code Enforcement, an affidavit. And one thing just, um, struck me again, I haven't studied this stuff, but on the back page number five. If the applicant that gets the exception sells or leases the building, they ask them to comply. What if there's a large, I'll use your Amish community that they sell within the family. Cash, no mortgage, because the bank would require, but what if they sell within their own religious sect? They now have to come up to compliance. I don't think that's quite right.
So the prospective subsequent owner or leasee files an affidavit. So if they have it in the family, then they would just sign the same.
Oh, I see. Alright, thanks.
Oh, yes, that's right.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Uh, the other one that's on there, John, is kind of a procedure. For your folks, yes, that we potentially. So, so to Dana's point, right now, is. We get the information out here. Allow the committee members time to digest it. We, uh, we agenda this item deliberately and, and, uh, we have a conversation about what we think. Is a reasonable path forward. What we have right now. Is our code enforcement folks who are out there right now in the SUVs driving around. Into these communities. Essentially being told. Not doing, can't make. And so what's our recourse? And, uh, they're moving, they're moving forward. So they being the Amish folks who are building the structures for themselves, they're continuing to do it. And they're telling John and his team. We're not doing it. So that's kind of where we are. So what's our recourse, right? Taking the court? I hope we got enough resources set aside for that. But reality is we might get the same outcome or still go. So, you know, it's kind of like it's juice worth the squeeze. So what are our alternatives, right? Mr. Shaw, you in?
Yeah, I got two questions totally separate. You announce this report, John. Pointed and who was on the board?
Yeah, I think it was an ad hoc folks who that.
Well, even an ad hoc, isn't, who got the ad hoc group?
Yeah, people had Amish. Communities that are down.
I mean, I mean, totally this announcement when you did have it. I mean, this was announced that there was a committee or a group. Did it do a notice? So there's no legal notice for now? And if you miss a committee, it's not in the minutes.
To the other supervisors, so we could have participated early on. Close to getting a packet for code enforcement department update. Why don't we do it that way? So we can all be aware of when these work. So you asked a question, yeah, I'll speak. Why would we give a religious exemption? Somebody, why would we just give it to everybody? You're gonna build a house on your own property, you don't want that one for us, sign off.
That's, that's a good question.
Can we do that legally, brother? Can't go through hundreds and hundreds of precedents. Alright, then don't do any of it. Stay there, sit there, okay? I'll find out for myself.
Sir, I'd really like to say something, but I think Mr. Shaw has a question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so my next, that was the first half. The second half, what? Does this specify one religious group and it looks general on heading? And if so, does that mean that, uh, the New Street Monastery? Are they exempt if they choose to? And how about the spiritual lights center in my town? Are they exempt if they choose to? Where do you draw the line on this?
Uh, on the back of it, the only attestation, so based off of, basically the Pennsylvania version of it. Uh, what it says is pretty much you're stating that you're a member of a recommended religious sect. That sect has established tenants which go against what the code is requiring. Um, that you adhere to those established descendants and that it would be solely used for that applicant. So it's not like not.
What they had is other than not wanting to buy a permit? I mean, are they gonna build it in a non-state manner?
For, for, for instance, um. In, in, speaking in generalities, there are like tons of different Amish groups out there, um. Say smoke detectors and CO detectors. They have religious convictions, uh, that they should not have to have those in their building. That's just, that's just one example. I mean, you're not required to have electricity in your house, whoever, you don't have to have it, unless you're running it out.
Right, anybody, I'm not required to have.
Right, but in that case, if you don't have electricity, you're still required to have battery operating. They're against that. And there are numerous, numerous other.
But I don't know how well people know the, and I tell you, I, I'm, I'm crazy about the. But you know, every Amish group has their own leader. And every leader has a different perspective. And the Amish will pick up, move to a different church if they don't, if they want to do something different. So this isn't a uniform thing. And now what if I choose, and let's just use me, what are you gonna do to me if I choose not to get a permit?
Ultimately, it would go to court. You refuse, build without a permit or whatever.
So we do have options and they don't. So I don't understand. Why? And I have no problem here. If in my town, if I want to grant an exemption to an Amish group. I can do it, my town board can do it. And if the mood changes, we can change it on the next one. But the Amish would have to come and talk to us about it. It's a step. I mean, and now you want to make a blanket one for the whole county. I don't like that. I mean, if the, if it's left to the towns, I will not stick my nose in town business.
The state code that they're following, your state code. I don't know if the, the town. For right to state code. I don't believe that you can, but the state hasn't taken any of these Amish to court. They're leaving it for the bottom, the counties, the towns.
Right, so the town can do it.
So the towns are the ones, if they take them to court, are gonna have the expense. The state has in no way in New York State taken any Amish to court. It's all left. To Clinton County, Morris Town. And that's why the state is. No exemptions. It's up to you guys what you want to do.
Now, are they, are they exempting anything with code? In other words, they can put in their own septic system as long as they sign that certificate?
Usually all they do is put in a privy.
No, no, I just don't want to mask it though. I know. But can they use that same certificate?
The, the things are listed on here with their immediate exemptions.
We can all, we can all use all those. They're all pretty rich.
I got two.
Slime, your followers.
Yes, sir.
John, Roger, if my neighbor built a house on. So it's just the other, starts living there. What would be the recourse from the county standpoint on what they would do? Would you then take them to court to force them to do what? Make it the building or comply with New York State building? Okay, he says, go scratch.
It's up to the court to figure out.
So the court would say, no, he's good, or they would say, you have to do this. He said, again, tells the court, I don't have the money, I don't have the world, I'm not gonna do it. What's the end game? You would not be able to live there, would they actually have victim?
Yes, so he could be fined.
He could be fined in prison for, for not complying with.
Once we issue that violation. It would be building without permit. Particular case or complying a structure that doesn't have. Um, you would say you have X number of days, usually thirty days, to comply or at least reach out to us and get the.
And they can be there either in prison based on local law or state laws.
But if it doesn't, like once it gets to the court, we're just supportive. They need us for some. Answer questions. Whatever they're doing, provide support for them. It is then up to them to figure out how they go. What if it stays at the criminal level, say they issue a fine? And they still do nothing, they pay the fine and that's it. Technically, correct me if I'm wrong, we can reissue it again, because now it's a new. Violation. County court, county court, state court. County court. Starts in town. So by town judge, you make a decision whether to fine or prison number or not. Right there, we would pursue it because it's too expensive. Seventeen people have so many. For, for the Amish?
Oh, anybody.
We've taken things to court or we have tried the Amish, we're just afraid that we don't have the money to go have. I will do whatever you guys.
Yeah, so who recognizes the religious sect? You said the phrase.
I do.
Not recognize religious sect, recognize.
There's no list, there's no list of this is a religion, this is not. So going back to the stats, prescription of the process, okay? So you go to court. You go to your court. That's when they would assert a defense, if they have a defense. And that's maybe many, many defenses. One of them is sincerely held religious belief. Court would then have to litigate whether or not. They had or sincerely held religious belief. What the religious belief was and how that related to what. Violation was that was listed. They would then make a decision whether that sincerely held religious belief was enough to exempt them from the code or not.
And my town judge is gonna make that.
My town judge is gonna make the initial call.
Who's in a, in a prosecution per se.
It's criminal, it's gonna be the DA. If it's, if it's local and you're running your own code enforcement, it's gonna be whoever you decide to.
But we have county code enforcement.
The DA's office, if it was crim, if it was criminal. So the judge makes that. It was civil.
By town attorney? So before we get to that.
So. I, I, all I can tell you is what John's gonna write, is what happens after John writes the ticket. Okay, you're telling John. But I think John is here to say, do you want me to start writing these tickets? If so, he'll start writing them, then we'll process, we'll go through this process. So you would get to court and you would say, here's my sincerely held religious belief. Court would go through the steps that they need to do to analyze that and they would say yes or no. They say no, then you could apply, you could appeal that decision through the process, the county court, they would file a federal lawsuit, do whatever you want to do. If they say yes, it's okay, the county would have the same alternative. File an appeal, go through the process, whichever, uh, dude they want to go. That's how, that's how the process works.
Good, made it to the United States District Court.
Which is the first level of federal court. District court is the first level of federal. Right, they settled. They tried, they chose not to. So in all likelihood, what would happen is we get to the, your town court, down court would decide against. Whatever the person sincerely held claim goes sincerely held religious belief. Their alternative then would be not only to appeal that, but to then file civil rights lawsuit in federal court. What happened with Morris Town, federal courts would then go through the process. That's how I think you got, that's how I think, I mean, I'm not familiar with Morrisville case, but that's definitely how they get there. So, so just like when we do lots of things out in the world, it's part of our operations, we operate the jail and things like that. They are wrong by us on a constitutional, US constitutional basis. They file a federal constitutional lawsuit in the district court. This case, northern district. The US District Court is the lowest level, then you go to the circuit courts, federal level and. They didn't get that far down from what, if it was settled, then they, they never got to the issues. And they never decided whether or not that was sincerely held. They chose, so you get at any time, this process chooses to make compromises.
Yes, sir. If you don't enforce your state codes. So it's not built properly. Something happens and then often opens us up to a liability. I, I guess I'm going back to Dana's question. If you subsequently sells or leases a building, applicant shall bring the building. A, how would you force them to do that? B, if I'm the buyer and I know it's Amish, I built it. I'm gonna give him cash, he's gonna give it to me. How will we go to, how's this gonna be? You've got an agreement, I don't give a crap what you guys sign. Doesn't make a difference. I don't wanna build it. I'll take it as it is, I don't care if it's mine or not. Then what, then you would have, if I'm not, I'm Amish. You could then not give me a CO, I mean, if I get leverage, liability and.
I honestly do not have any answer for that. As I said, the. My form was based off of Pennsylvania's, just something for us to look at, to discuss. On there, if that's the way we wanted to go, we changed. I do not know if Pennsylvania handles that.
Uh, I'm just thinking longer term, if this was the case, if we gave them exemptions. You would then between real property and code enforcement, label and target every one of those properties. As designated as not complying with your state building codes, if anybody with that subject would buy it would have to know. You're buying something that didn't meet the link code. You were signing off to say you would challenge that, you have the responsibility and that you're gonna be required to bring up the code since you're not Amish. I mean, is there other avenues to export it? Kind of get us off the liability hot seat? We just identify every property that's not compliant and tag it in their system.
There's been two of them sold.
Sold to other Amish people or none?
That sold to. In order for them, they take down those, they, they brought those structures back to code.
Sorry, the Amish ship or the new owners?
The new owners, knowing that they were up to. The new owners.
Probably negotiated. Right, respectful, you assume it's yet. But then. The state does not recognize these religious exceptions in any way, shape or form. New York State does not recognize religious exemptions in any way, shape or form. In the New York State. Was the group, you guys met.
New York State. I thought you meant New York State.
So the question is, is that they don't pay social security. So somewhere, someone has recognized that sect of government. So somewhere, someone has to recognize that second, the federal government.
It, it's my understanding that when they come of age, and wanna become a member of the church, they have to fill out. Basically form work to send into the federal government that removes the requirement to pay social security and being.
Someone had to recognize.
Yeah, and that's federally, that would be federally recognized, but New York State, terms of building code. That's what New York State is telling John.
In the settlement that they had. The United States District Court versus New York. For the violation. It's free. That must mean. The United States District Court has recognized the religious. Religion.
Not necessarily, those, the statements in the settlement are made by the various parties. There was no, I understand, there was no ruling, so that, that settlement was approved by the court, so remember, there's a thing, federal law called the religious freedom of reparation. That talks about the ability to practice religion, so there's not a central registry of, these are the religions, and these are the ones we recognize, and so, those are, they're, they're litigated on a case by case basis, although. It's generally not written down somewhere, recognized, the Amish are recognized sect, the Quakers in some cases are recognized sect. Certain things go with it. So. You can either litigate them, and if people wanted to, I mean, you can just go out and start writing tickets if you want to, that's fine, that's cool. Or you can try to come up with something that deals with those situations that have already been encountered. I think that's why John's here today, is to ask you what your preferment of operation is.
John, do you have a state certification?
State certification, correct.
State doesn't recognize the. Correct? So how can they, how can create an exemption that these guys would be? That states certify.
It's gonna, you're creating policy, and then if they want to see John with the same thing, then they would then cite the person, and then we could go forward and decide who's right. And have to defend John, if they're gonna adopt a policy like this.
But would you guys have granted religious exceptions based on your state licenses?
If I have something that I can point to, like a resolution.
From the county.
That I've been told I would be backed up for. I would.
Like a change of two years, John, it's forty three today.
If I could share some more.
No, absolutely.
I thought originally on this, we're do what the state says, run it through the court system. And let the court figure out what's gonna happen with anybody. There's been some. You know, discussion about how much that costs and things, and. If there's a legal way for me to tell our inspectors. You could do it this way. Where the supervisor is the same, we point to that. Over times, we can hang our heads on something legal. If that's the way you guys wanna go, yells, that's, that's fine, but the. Standard operating procedure would be, they're not building where they're supposed to be, so. Yeah.
Didn't state with after. How many times has a state ever come after any film? Or should, I'm just watching, just worried about watching. They don't plan to quote. State lords come. For. Any. How often has you seen ever come after code enforcement, watching again?
Before me, I have no idea, but we've got calls before asking what we were doing, if there was something to follow up, to make sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, and so far. We've been aboard with all of this. David, do you still?
Can I go?
I, I, yeah, I don't know that.
We referenced how much does it cost again, that it's costly, this concern about legal costs, which is what we always, why you shaking that?
I don't, I'm, I am not saying anything about cost, that's one shit.
Don't be sugarhead, I thought that.
No, no, I did shake my head, but I, I guess there's a personal, it, it cost, cost is not a part of the. Equation.
Well, I've heard of reference, three times.
Yeah, I, I guess I have.
Maybe towards us. I've heard references to concern about the cost of the people pursuing, dealing with this stuff. Let's say, I, I'm not familiar with the Amish, I suspect they're like every other religion, they have laws, like everybody. Let's say, for example, how it works out, and we read to do something with this exemption. And somebody loses their life as a result of not having that overproof policy in place, because we granted them an exemption because, or they don't have batteries in their house or something. They can use batteries. So anyway, it's bizarre in some ways. Prevent him being able to. Go along with our watching accountability, but if somebody were to die in a fire, I mean, that's gonna be a cost of the county, correct? Rather likely, because I can imagine we're gonna be able to hold up, oh, they, they signed off on it, so.
What's gonna happen right now?
The only question I want.
What's gonna happen right now? Since there's a fire right now. What's, what's gonna happen right now? I'll tell you what's gonna happen. I'm not gonna read this off.
I know that, John, you can't say that with a hundred percent certainty. I mean, the Amish, from what you told me yesterday, you were saying, well, they don't, they shun technology, they shun society, you know, every time I turn around, I see people using technology, I see them using nails guns, I see them traveling. So at what point do they shun society, at what point do they not shun society, I guess? If we're gonna base it on. According to you.
When they get off their property, they can use a chainsaw, they can peel them, they can do that.
According to you, now, I'll take your word that you believe them, a hundred percent that they're not using technology, but again, if I keep going back to what if we get sued as a result of failing to buy proper code enforcement, building. What's that costly?
Can I answer that? Am I knowledgeable on that page? Can we answer it on the double?
That's the best. If somebody else get into this discussion here at some point, I've raised my hand about two thousand times.
I'm sorry.
I was waving a day.
I didn't know, Mr. Happ.
I support this, I think this is a pragmatic way to fix a problem. I think if somebody waves something, the responsibility is upon them, that's where it lies, them, not, oh, we gotta blame the county for that responsibility. And I think that this is a good start, I have a problem with religious sects because the Fourteenth Amendment, the Constitution, does the equal, the protection clause is equal protection. I think if anybody wants to, that they should, but I don't wanna bog this down for everyone, I think this is a good first start. I think we should back up John to do this, because you have to start somewhere. This is a start, is this the end of it? You know, if you wanted to build a house on it, then you would sue and say, me too, me too, why are you protecting a certain group? All of us, we get the same protection. So I, I support it. Sir?
Yes, um, I know that you, your committee, your group, working group, uh, discussed, so I've got a couple of questions here. Every time. When this work progresses. Like, if I was to do it. Lived in the town and had county code enforcement, you've got inspections for all kinds of issues, from footings, foundations, the framing, the insulating. Now, if you choose not to have wiring, well, you don't have to have electric. I mean, if you choose to have, have the outouts, you don't need accepting, but there's a, a larger list of check offs, John, that you would have to perform right on a regular.
On regular.
Yes, so when they sign a form, is it a blanket form for everything, you don't go back and move it that place again?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Is it a blanket form where you would not go back again at all?
Uh, that's on the, uh, the other paper in here, just kinda gives the procedure that we would follow potentially against.
Well, I agree that.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you just go once?
It would basically be going at the end of the project and verifying they've built what they said they were going to do, they said they're gonna build a four bedroom, single family house.
And so you'd get a sign off at that time?
They would not get a certificate, because a certificate is saying that it was built to the codes, and it wasn't.
So there are no CO, they would get issued no, but would they have to sign anything else other than that? Whatever that paper is, is there just one, I'm trying to find out, is there just one piece of paper on file for that, that residence or that piece of property? I could try and find out.
It would be for that project, is what I was picturing.
And so let's say they built a barn afterwards, or they're all into retail business. If they had something to, for butchering, or for vegetables, would that be another one they'd have to sign off on?
If we have jurisdiction over the project, then yes, they would sign it. For each project, so like a barn, we don't have jurisdiction over barns.
And so. They don't have a CO, but they're living there, so it's considered a residence. Fast forward ten years, whatever, and they sell the place to a non Amish, and they pull the money out of their pocket and they buy it. What authority do you have to go and say, you can't live here, there's no CO? And my argument, I'd, I'd actually file a lawsuit, people just moved out, and you let them live there, I can live there. I mean, have you sought that out, and where this is all going, if you go down this road? That's, and, and I'm not, and I know I'm directing you, but it's not you.
Yeah, I believe the answer might be, sign this out.
That's, and so is that the case, so, I, if I bought that house, all I gotta do is sign one bill?
I would say if you're not, if you're not a member of whatever they say, then, then. Then I'll bring it up again.
What, you, how are you gonna make your?
I, I'm telling you, telling you again, I just modeled this answer from Pennsylvania, and it's.
Well, that's what scares me.
Well, it's not.
If we go down this road, and I actually don't have a problem, like David, I just don't see how it works.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
This is the beginning of the conversation.
And secondly, why can't, and I support it wholeheartedly, if everybody could do that. Not just the Amish, I mean, if I wanna do it. I'll sign one of those forms.
I'm sorry, I think it says that.
Right, I mean, I could technically, I might have to cheat a little bit about how religious I am. There you go, and I got the suspender, thanks to, and all I gotta wear is a white shirt all the time.
You, you understand.
The point is, I don't see how you're gonna control it, once you go down that road, I understand that you're trying to come up with a solution. I just don't see the end of the problem, you're kicking the can down the road. And there's no end to it.
Mr. Owen?
No, John had the state board, that's a state, Wisconsin has the state as well.
Uh, I'm not, I didn't check.
You were just.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
So, uh, I would be remiss, but first of all, the second R is restoration, legislative restoration. But I would also be remiss if I didn't mention to you that code enforcement, even for the county, is an optional service. Does not have to enforce. Absolutes, just like a town or village, can absolve itself of enforcing the code.
Ooh, county.
Right.
Well, I mean, it's an option, you have to put the options on the table, that's what we're here to talk about, the county can also decline to enforce the code, maybe involve the Department of State, the State of New York, and become their. That's an option.
Now, I brought this up.
No, I'm not, I'm not here to make the relative merits of the option, I'm here to say to you, that's an option, you should be aware of. You should be aware of your options, it's an option. The towns, if they default, default to the county.
Right, but we can't get out of it?
Yes, you can.
Oh, so both, the town is a county?
The town can, if you're, the town, there's a, there's a timeline, I believe it's June or July first, of every year, if you opt out before that year, it defaults to the county. If the county opts out, it defaults to the state. Yes, towns can opt, still, towns can opt out, right, towns can opt out at any time, but see, there's two or July, so you have the six months to get ready to enforce it on them. Then, then their, their county's obligation starts in the next county.
Mr. Hacks?
I, I see your point, and I think it's a good start, starting talking about, that's something you need to beef off the liability, part of that, recognizing what's going on here. Because from a town state point, I have some concerns that we're sort of waving the wand, saying, okay, you signed the paper, you're religious sect, you're exempt, you can go do what you want. But then it falls back to, what if they wanna build a floodway in the town, so the town will scratch? What if they put up a building that they sell pies and vegetables from, then also they're gonna cycle and review, and also you, we're not gonna review this, order is now. Come into play, when the wand's waved by the county, does that then go to the towns too, because they're gonna feel like, I already got the rights, you know, I don't need setbacks. I can, but let it, I say it any way I want, because I've been told I have that exception. It's just a concern I had before.
You're all right. So that changes a lot.
Does it, what if, what if they're gonna put a building right down next to the river, and they're subject to it right next to the water, but eventually that pollutes the water, which goes into your wells, which goes from here. I mean, just. Given carte blanche, I think we need to tighten this up really tight, say, this is all you get, if you get this.
Yeah, one thing about, related to what you've mentioned there too, if, my thought on this would be, um, this would only apply to. A structure that was owned and used solely by whoever it was that signed it, so like if it was a situation where it had a stand, people came into it or something, if there's gonna be public. Or if there's gonna be employees that aren't a member of whatever they're signing off on, then it would have to meet everything else, because.
That would happen.
Their thoughts, from what I've understood in conversations and greetings, had actually bought, um. Idiots guide to Amish living, just to try to figure out some of this stuff. Try to, try to understand it a little bit better, and John, you'd mentioned before, that, you know, if they didn't write it, they don't like that, I also got one that they did. Trying to see where they're coming from, but anyway. They are thinking. If somebody dies in their house, you know, there's a fire, and it kills somebody that has caused it, and, and with my conversation with the bishop and the Jax in the area. Um, I told him, I said, I understand where you're coming from with that, I said, but when you start putting somebody else's life possibly in danger. You don't have that right to put that belief on them, you know, if, if, if you wanna believe that yourself, that's fine, but if you're having public coming in, no, you need, you need to build it to the states. So just to throw that out. I'm, I'm gonna go back to.
So the dialogue here is.
So the dialogue here is excellent. This is level one, but not quite enough. My question is, if we're gonna sign that and have any teeth in it, what we started with, if you're gonna have something they sign off on, that has to be added to the deed. So the next person doing their look back due diligence when they're buying something, billing such and such is not acceptable in the code until it is refurbished and don't seal. Something has to be there.
It's a real property. You're not required to file a deed.
And I bet they don't file deeds. You're not required to file a deed.
You're dealing on property here.
You can't, you're not required to file a deed.
What's that?
It's usually a mortgage thing.
They just put it on a deed if they sign it. A deed, a deed protects you from the other debt. That's what it is. Public notice that I own the property. So we don't have to. If we have the ability to put it on the deed, the next guy trying to buy it probably needs a deed.
Or at least real property has to not file.
Yeah.
Why? Why would we care?
Because you've, you've signed something that didn't meet up to the code.
Yeah, let the Amish deal with it. Why, why would we have to deal with it?
We should, we should deal with it so we can go back and make sure it's up to code for the, when it comes out of the Amish. That's where our liability is gonna be when it comes out.
Why?
Why do we care?
Why? Unless you go for a mortgage, I know contract require it, but why? Why do we care? If someone waves it, you want to buy this house, which I don't think we should assume is, is built poorly. I think the Amish, they're smart, just because they're old fashioned doesn't mean they're not smart. They're not gonna put a privy in a swamp.
Why do I do that?
Um, no, and so why would we care if someone builds something out of the code? He waves, someone buys it, the buyer waves it. Why do we as government have to intrude in everyone's life so damn much? Give them freedom.
So that would be great, but I think we're still alive.
I have number five, so it doesn't require that. Does, number five doesn't even require you to be a member of the sect.
Well, it does.
No, it doesn't.
The Amish, you'll bring the building into compliance with the uniform code. Keep going. From what is prior to the sale, unless the prospective subsequent owner, or at least he files an affidavit, compliance law. Which means they're, they're Amish. The Amish is a member who recognizes the legal sex.
The new subject owner is also agreeing not to do it. These are weighted kind of vaguely so that you don't pigeon your hole in that.
I don't think so. I think it needs to be looser. I'm, I'm gonna come over.
I, I, I find myself in agreement with Mr. Haff. Cause I, you know, I think I've been thinking maybe more than the other day, and I recognize this as. And we are talking about housing structures, and also the religion required in building a very certain manner. You know, certain set of plans that they have to follow, but they can't do anything else. They can't just go and build ranch style houses. Their bedroom's gotta be a certain size, it's all kinds of stuff. The only thing I, what I'm about a little bit with, with my Amish with window side. And some window side. But, you know, we're talking about structure, you know, two structures. We're talking about a few, we're not talking about these grandiose number of things here. If we're really concerned about building codes, we ought to be concerned about some of the agricultural structures. They are covered, we are covering them, and we don't even review the plans. Here, we got a certain set of plans. We know what that house is gonna be, whether it's here, 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 here. It's gonna be the same damn house. It's gonna be the same damn way. They're built pretty well. Let's see. I'm, I'm just, I'm not concerned about it, I'm concerned about wasting the.
But the Amish word doesn't even in here. The word Amish isn't Amish.
I agree.
It's sitting Jews, Ukrainian Catholics. They may have different building codes that you can't. But they can sign this and get exempted. You know, all the different sects.
There's two thousand religions in this country. We don't.
Well, have you, have you ever had an instance of somebody coming in, ever, anywhere in the state saying, I'm a, a sitting Jew, this way I gotta build my house?
I've never had anybody before today come in and say, we gotta worry about the Amish. This is, there's a.
We've been worried about the Amish.
Johnson's got twenty eight families up in Whitehall. That's not a small amount, Whitehall.
Certainly. You've got, you know, four hundred barns built, Whitehall.
And, and what, who manages, who oversees the regulation of barns? State of New York.
Nobody, nobody, nobody.
But the state doesn't write the barn laws. That's why you can't. We're not worried about liability there. We're not hamstrung by liability, liability. So don't get hamstrung here either.
So should we have a right to Amish law that just covers that?
Say anybody. Surrender everything, God. I'm afraid.
I'm a Luda. Dan Shaw had his hand up back there, sir, you get your question.
Well, thank you, Daryl. First of all, I gotta answer, uh, Dana's question of who does in England the barns? Town invasion, you gotta buy permanent.
Cause you guys suck money out of everybody.
Wait on this thing. But my point is, if we do what you're proposing, there's no set of prints, right? So when they build a home, you don't know if it's two bedrooms, three bedrooms, one bedroom. Yes, they do submit to print.
Sure.
Okay.
But they're not architecturally stamped like we require.
Uh, whoops, under fifteen hundred square feet.
Well, shouldn't they have that one set?
They do have a new set, but there are some that, I don't know why it's against their beliefs to have an architect.
But what I did want to state was, I agree, this is hard to say, Brian, that. I think we need to put, uh, you need to file something on the deed. That that does not get inspected, because ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, nobody's gonna remember whether or not that was ever inspected. Be nobody, probably employed at the county level to say it's inspected or not inspected. But just like a needsman to go across somebody's property to get to another field, you're letting anybody that buys it, if they don't do a, any kind of title search and they miss the boat, it's not our fault. We put it on there so that it's aware that that piece of property has a home on it. And I agree with Bob, it doesn't have to be on a barn, but on a home dwelling, that it wasn't inspected. There was no C O issue. And then take it from there to whatever you want, but we've done our homework.
So, let's get back to C O S. Isn't there insurance companies or something, where C O S is to get insurance policies?
They do not. They do not purchase insurances on their own property.
No, I'm not talking about Amish.
Oh, okay.
People who are not Amish. They don't, they shouldn't know the answers to questions. Don't require C O S to get through.
We don't ask that question, Dave, but if somebody came forward and said, I don't have to stick it in my, yeah, that's how I expect it, I told them, right, or they would not issue the policy. That's not a question we ask on the.
Okay, I'm just curious. But is another reason for C O S?
It's a true. I, I would say a bank loan.
Bank loan, yeah.
Bank loan.
Yeah, that's right, cause I do know that, because they held up, held up. He had been, also built thirty years ago by the C O S. But I go over to a specialist. Anyone else? John? I'm under the impression. Houston, Pinkberry, have to follow the same New York state coach as the county.
Or stricter. You can go stricter. You chose to do that for solar farms with, uh, ditch towers with farmers. We, we chose to do it a more fair, even way.
So in the interest of, of time, everybody's time, and, uh, we had a great conversation. Yeah, no, 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 you, I'm gonna protect your lunch hour, protect your lunch hour. So, so, you know, the purpose of the working group getting together, by my understanding, was just to develop an idea. Develop an idea that the committee could, could look at. Here's the idea. Okay, we got, we got the idea on the page. So, um, and we had a lot of good questions. I appreciate the conversation. It has been good. We've got some do outs, you know, some questions that, you know, we got some notes here. Hopefully John took good notes, loads up here. Come back to the committee with maybe a little bit more, uh, you know, some fidelity perhaps, but also give the committee some time to kind of digest this, think about it, and figure out what we want to do. So I'd like to put it on the agenda for the next committee meeting. And, uh, have another conversation and see where the committee would like to go. If that's, if that's the please. Can I have, I wanna ask a Roger question here because we've all hit on it, but we haven't got it direct, and I think we need to know this when we get to that next meeting. Basically, or the answer, it's right, we can make it stricter. I don't know whether we can do anything to make it looser. We can't anything else. How can we do it? You know? I'd like to know the answer when we get to the next. How can you make that? Yeah, how can you make third state rules and now say, oh no, you don't have to abide by state law?
This is just to get out of jail free cards for John.
We're not gonna, so that he doesn't have to abide by state law.
So he doesn't get slammed up for that.
Yeah, one person back here. Yes, sir. Uh, before meetings that your guy.
Okay, sorry. Anyone else? Yeah.
Brian, quickly, to make it looser, the state doesn't recognize a religious exemption, so even us making that, the state's not gonna recognize it. But we can make it whatever we want, as long as, like John said, we got a resolution that he can hang his head up. We can make it as loose as we want.
So you're, well, aren't you making the rules a lot looser by saying you don't have to abide by? That is my guess.
There's a degree, yes, but if the state doesn't recognize a religious exemption, why should we? He's talking about the state of Pennsylvania has a form, and I think the state of Wisconsin, I forget, hopefully, but I'm pretty sure the state of Wisconsin now has a form. The state of New York has no such thing. So if the state's not willing to change, why are we willing to change? And are we confident that's gonna be, I guess, held up in the event of a tragedy? Or is the state gonna look at it and say, well, you're on your own. You guys made this rule. Wouldn't we live this? How much is that gonna cost? It will happen, something will happen.
Amish houses must have burned down somewhere, what happened? Build a new one.
That was owned by somebody later on who wasn't Amish. There's the loss.
That's where the problem lies.
Yeah.
No, but I think that's taken care of. It was taken care of in forty. Is yours being lived in next door?
Yes.
Covered by clothes and everything?
I think he's bringing up folks if he wanted. He, he said, oh, he said he made it, he made it better off.
Well, that was an old house. You didn't build it.
Right.
So.
So we covered all the waters. We looked at construction, talked about engineers. And in the meantime, John's come here, the idea, he has to do his job. He's still not sure how to do his job. So he has to go out and either put blinders on. Go talk to the ones who are working, he has to. So he came here for balance from us. And she was gonna leave, it's spinning. I figure what John is.
Just listen to me.
I mean, you bring up a, a good point. I just don't think.
Right, I, and I, I, I agree that, you know, we have the information filed. I think it is important.
He's gotta play his lip.
Right, basically, they're, basically, they're filing, yeah, chair over there. We haven't done anything on, because are we going the route that everybody else is supposed to be going, or are we gonna come up with a compromise of some sort? Yep, and if it is a compromise, I'm not the one that's supposed to be making.
So, so, so you and.
It, it's just sitting there.
All right, sir, you had other business.
I, yes, I apologize for that.
Chairman, before we leave that, I, this is Tony Jordan. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. Sorry, Mike, I just. This working group, I know we started this about a year ago, but I, I don't think the enforcement is from the criminal side is quite as simple maybe as we would hope, so I would just ask if possible if I could be included in any of these discussions, if we're gonna be looking to local court to to be enforcing these. That's all.
A- absolutely, Tony.
Thanks.
Don't, don't forget to come to the next meeting.
Yeah, I was in, I was in county court, sorry.
That's all right. I understand. Thank you, Tony. Yes, sir.
I'm just seeking, uh, permission to apply for a family court grant for my Amish. We've applied before. Uh, we, so it was denied.
Danny, John, the discussion. Mr. Haff?
Nobody ever wants to know how much money all the time, aren't we? Is it money, money? How much money is?
Uh, it's, it's whatever we, whatever it was seeking.
Gonna be spent.
Whatever, yeah, I, it, the grant just came out. Um, the maximum award for any one county would be seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. What's happening with these grants is they generally go to the urban areas. It's a competitive grant. We applied before, we did not, uh, have an award last night. I think it's a good idea to apply. Um, it's from, it's just legal services who sources us, uh, all of our other state funding. And, uh, it's the, it's not a set amount. It, it depends on what we look into grant. There's a certain pool, and we hope we get some. We're hoping.
So motion to apply for the grant, seconded by John. Any other discussion? Sir, what's the form? What, what would you be doing? These grants are an attempt to open the door to signing counsel immediately after CPS report is made. This doesn't happen right now. Whether it's eventually indicated or not, CPS report is made, the S S investigates, may or may not go to court, they can unfound it, not, nothing happens to it, or indicating go to court. I L S is trying to get everybody a lawyer on day one. Now, the relative merits of that, we can wait till the cows come home. But if that's the same grant we're talking about here, that means county attorney is involved much, much earlier in the process. More, more people for everyone, not just Mike. It's just like the D A. There's gonna be money to the public defender, but not money to all the other people with public defender interacts with, the S S and everybody else. On the flip side. Just want you to understand.
The last, the last time the application was for investigative services as it relates to family court, because they're not presently funded. Um, my, my intent was to, again, apply for investigative services.
You need to know that when we start talking about family court, public defender resources, there's people on, just like in, in Tony Jordan's case, in criminal cases, there's somebody on the other side that has to deal with that public defender. In family court cases, there's somebody on the other side that has to deal with that family court case, and that's my office. So, and, you know, whatever happens, happens, and it may mandate it, in which case, they'll just give us grants and then tell us this is the way it's gonna be, but if we have options, you need to understand again, I'm not advocating, not advocating, I'm just saying, understand the big, the big picture of what your options are.
I go back my motion.
Well, if he's using it for investigators, that's fine.
It's, and, and.
That's why I asked the one with four.
I, you know, look, there's two sides to these grants. Uh, this is not mandated, it's an opportunity for funding. I don't have strong feelings either way, uh, meaning we don't have to apply for grants. Uh, I, it seems like an opportunity to, uh, improve services on, with state funding, but I, and if you want to be involved in the planning of the grant, or anybody wants to be involved in the planning of the grant, they're welcome to. It's supposed to be, um, a group effort, and it's the same group that um, generally works on the I L S.
It would be a second bite of the apple. If you accept it, then we would have the vote to accept the grant, so that maybe is the.
That's true too, so we, we don't, we don't have to accept the award.
Okay, all right.
So you want to continue with applying? The motion's still standing? So you wanna continue with applying, the motions still stand, seconded? Any further discussion? John, you're, you're looking.
No. We got a chance to reject it, we have to look at it or something.
Yeah, so if the full, if it's awarded, full board would have to vote to accept. There'll be committees authorize applications, board authorizes exemptions.
Okay, I just.
That aren't reoccurring.
Simple language, we get money in. What's the bag?
You're not getting money in yet, you're asking for money, now we have to decide if we're gonna actually take it.
Okay, and say we are. That side is. I don't know.
See, Mike asked, tell us about the rest. The Yankees get another reliever and a new hitter and a starting pitcher, and Roger gets nothing. This is all funded by the Yankees, the Red Sox get squat. He's gonna get. Lots of assets, Roger's gonna have to be on the other side again.
Are you stacking the deck again?
Funny, you might want chairs, you don't know.
We'll be getting some extras now, we had some more.
I understand now.
All those in favor? All right, are you closed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Any other business for the committee?
Oh, there's got to be.
He lost, he thought to be doing that, now he's good.
Don't forget, we're.
I'm sorry, we, we are in others, so any other business? September's good for agenda writing? Okay.